Okay. Welcome, everybody, to a continuation of the public hearing for the Woods Roxbury LLC for regulated and/or upland review activities associated with a proposed six lot subdivision, 206 North Street, Roxbury, Connecticut. We're continuing the public hearing from the September 28th meeting. Am I right in that, Karen? 28th?
Twenty-second, I think.
Twenty-second, okay.
You were close.
I knew it was September. So is Rob here?
I'm looking through right now, and I don't see Rob.
Okay, we'll give it a minute. Somebody want to hear? I'll text them.
He might be thinking at 7:30.
Okay, hopefully you get that. So we'll move on to call to order. You want to start, Andy?
Andy Engel.
Drew? Sue? Drew?
Yeah, Andrew Wooden.
John, you're on, right?
Yeah, John Smollett, but I'll step down.
Right. So John has stepped down for the, um, this application because he's a member of the land trust. Anybody else from the commission on? Okay, Julie, you want to put the legal notice up that we did?
Okay.
Did we notice this?
Are you seeing it yet?
Yep. So there it is. We did notice this properly. So the hearing has been properly noticed. Thank you, Julie. I don't see Marjorie or the Corax or their people on, so.
I'm here.
Yes.
Yeah, Paul Manson is on, and Marjorie, I have her logged on.
Okay.
I see her. Oh, yeah, right, I see her on.
Oh, okay.
Is Mark Lancor on?
Mr. Chairman, Chris Smith, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Lancor is not going to be joining us tonight.
Okay.
Based on our understanding of the continuation of the hearing.
Correct. Um, Chris Allen is on, right, Chris?
I have him logged in.
Hi, Russ, I am here.
Hi. So to bring everybody up to date, at the last meeting, the commission decided to hire an independent, um, independent expert. And we chose Ed Pollack of Connecticut Ecosystems at the meeting, and Ed was approved. And I had talked to Ed before the meeting, and Ed had the time, and he was willing to do it. However, after the public hearing, Mark Lancor emailed all of us, the intervenor, myself, Gail Metagard, our town attorney, and felt that just having a environmental scientist look at this wouldn't do us justice because most of the issues are engineering issues. And he recommended that we hire an engineer. And Mike Klein also stated that during the public hearing, on behalf of the intervenor, that an engineer would be probably a better choice or have Ed with an engineer. So after the email, I contacted Ed Pollack, and he felt the same. He felt that he wouldn't be able to comment on any engineering or stormwater calculations because that's not his expertise. I called Gail, and Gail and I decided the best thing to do was to hire a company that had many different types of expertise within the company, engineering, wetland scientist, environmental scientist, which is what Chris is. And we know Chris, the commission knows Chris because he works for Land Tech, which used to be out of Southbury, but has since moved to Westport, and they have a big operation down there. So I contacted Chris because I know him. I don't work with Chris at all through Arcadis, so there was no conflict for me. And Chris, Chris's firm expressed an interest in not only being able to evaluate this from an engineering standpoint, but also an environmental and wetlands evaluation standpoint, and that they could get the work done by mid-October. Therefore, we held a special meeting, a quick one, it was a two-minute special meeting, to, the commission had to approve Land Tech as the hired expert, which was done. And Chris, your firm submitted a report, which I would like you to just briefly go through. Just, is your engineer with you, or you'll cover the whole thing?
I was expecting him to be here. I just sent him a text, but I haven't heard back from him. He was supposed to be on the meeting.
Okay. Um, basically, would you just summarize what the letter said?
Sure. So, yeah, our letter was, actually, submitted October 19th. We realized that there was one small typo on it, so we submitted a revised letter dated October 20th.
Right, that typo was, it said, the initial one said five lots.
Exactly.
We, I made you where it's six, and you made the change.
That's correct.
Right.
All right, so, um, just to summarize the letter, it's broken down into sections. The first section is regarding the drainage report, and it discusses the applicant's use of the rational method to evaluate pre- and post-development runoff rates. This was part of Rob's commentary, so I'll just summarize it here. If there's any questions, hopefully he'll be on, he can answer questions about that. But, um, we thought that the rational method wasn't, was troublesome for several reasons, mostly because it underestimated rainfall volume generated. So the design of some of the stormwater detention systems and detention systems, we thought, might be undersized because of that. So we asked them to redo that and to use the SES, SES methodology rather than a rational method. And we just had some comments. And our, our comment at the end of that section was that once the calculation hasn't been revised, then we submitted, we would perform more comprehensive review of those revised computations. Then we addressed soil erosion and sediment controls. We had five comments, basically stating that temporary sediment trap should be provided for lots one, three, and five. We requested size and calculations for all temporary sediment traps. We asked that all self-fence upgrade, upgrading of regulated areas be augmented with either state hay bales or quarrellocks. We asked them to provide a detail for straw wall barrier, which is labeled SW on the plans. And we asked the applicant to provide additional detail regarding sediment erosion control inspection dates and rainfall events that would trigger additional inspections. Then the last, last section was, those wetlands and watercourses, made a comment that the two watercourses that flow through the site are intermittent, they're not capable of supporting fish or macroinvertebrates, in our opinion, because they are intermittent. He stated that there are no direct wetland impacts associated with the proposed six lot development. As you already know, there's no, no filling or activities within the wetlands, and that is about a half acre of disturbance within the uplift review area, 100-foot uplift review area, mainly associated with grading for driveways and stormwater treatment measures, as well as portions of the driveways on lots one, four. And our final comment was that the only likelihood of impacts to wetlands and watercourses rises from soil erosion and sedimentation during construction and impacts associated with stormwater runoff. That was our opinion, as long as the applicant could address those comments that we provided above regarding drainage erosion, erosion seven control, we thought the development was not likely to have a detrimental impact on wetlands and watercourses.
Thank you, Chris. Just to be clear, is that conclusion that it won't have an impact, is that based on after they make changes that you recommend it using, not using the rationale method, using the more conservative method? Or is it at this point in time as it's designed?
That's correct. Right. My comment was, as long as they can address the comments that, you know, regarding the stormwater drainage and erosion sediment control measures, didn't appear that there were other issues that would result in significant impacts to wetlands and watercourses.
Okay, thank you. Um, Marjorie, you, you, I think you texted or something that you never received the email where Mark Lancor emailed me, Gail, you.
Not me.
No?
No.
I could have sworn you were on that email. I did ask Gail immediately, and my email back to Mark is, please do not go direct to me or Gail or anybody, go to Karen, and Karen will disseminate it through all the parties so that there's no expartee communications. I called Gail about that, and she said, well, they were all on the email, and I do, I will get back to you because.
I will check again, but I will.
Yes. You know, my phone doesn't hold emails very long, but my main computer does, and I don't have time to go in and look. But I'm sure, and he didn't recommend Land Tech. He, his main concern was that we're going to hire an environmental wetlands expert, and most of the issues were engineering, and we were going to have to, in 30 or 60 days, then go out and hire an engineer. So I thought there was a good point, and Mike Klein made the same point at the meeting, and I wish I heard him a little, little stronger, because it would have saved the commission a little time and not having to have a special meeting. But when I did talk to Gail, she said, well, he, he did email everybody, so I don't see a problem, but you're going to need to have a special meeting to hire whoever you decide. And I did call a couple of companies, not that I work with, that I know of, and they weren't interested. And Land Tech was my second choice, and again, we have a history with Chris, so I felt, and he's done a great job for the commission in the past. We don't use experts very often. I think the last time we used Chris was 15 years ago, when I had hair and he, he had brown hair. So I just want to make that statement. If I'm wrong, then you could bring that up with the attorneys if that's an issue.
No, no, not an issue, just correcting my understanding, but I will check again.
Thank you. Um, so Chris, Mark's not here. When do we expect the response to Land Tech's report to be submitted?
For the record, Chris Smith, on behalf of the applicant, Land is attorney with Alter and Pearson. I believe that within a week, we should have those revised calculations supplied to Land Tech and, and of course, the intervenors and the commission, most importantly, so that that's the timeframe that we're looking at. I spoke with Mark about that today, Mark Lancor, and that's his estimate. So that should provide ample time before your November, I believe, 24th meeting date, which is the date that I think we were talking about having a possible continuation to, for that reason.
So the applicant is requesting a continuation?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, and I believe we do have the requisite statutory and executive order, EO, timeframe available for, for this extension.
That's right. Under Executive Order 7I, it allowed a 90-day extension, and under Executive Order 9H, it extended that to February 9th. We have to call a public hearing within 65 days. We called one within 35. And then normally, we get 65 days, and the public hearing has to be closed, or we could get an extension with the applicant's permission for another, not to exceed 65 days. Add 90 days to that, and I don't know, we're out in 2021, I guess. I haven't added it all up, but I know we're well within the statutory guidelines or the regulations at this time.
And, and Mr. Chairman, for the record, my client would, would consent to an extension through the day after your next meeting in the event of, you know, the meeting's canceled for whatever reason, a snow day or something along those lines. So I think that would be the 25th.
Well, snow days don't count anymore because we're doing Zoom. And my kids are kind of bummed out about that because there's not going to be any snow days anymore.
Well, I'm in Denver. I'm in Denver, and my grandson did not have school yesterday when we flew in because of the snow that they had, which is unusual even for Denver. So last night it was in single digits, but anything could happen.
Great. So I need to talk to the commission about this because we have seven, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, or Julie, we have seven new applications, two, two notice of violations that need to be dealt with. And although we've been fortunate enough to be able to do these public hearings in regular meetings by interrupting the public hearings in the past, that's not going to be possible going forward. Otherwise, we'll be, we'll be here at a midnight, and it's not fair to the volunteers. So the 24th is our next regular meeting. So Marjorie, chime in, if that date works for all your experts and Chris, all your experts, I will ask the commission, do we want to have a regular meeting? Maybe the third week in November, the third Tuesday in November, and then do the public hearing on the date of our regular meeting?
I have over a finance on the third Tuesday.
Okay. Wednesday?
I could do a Wednesday.
Sue, could you do Wednesday?
I'm here, Russ.
Hey, Rob, how are you?
Good, sorry I'm late.
It's okay. Um, we're, we're going to continue the public hearing because the applicant has requested more time to respond to the Land Tech report. And all that you missed is Land Tech basically summarized their report, and right now, we're trying to decide when we could continue the public hearing to. It sounds like the applicant and the intervenor could do when, November 24th, that's the Tuesday of our regular meeting. But because we have seven new applications in tonight and two notice of violations, it's gotten quite busy quite quickly, and I don't think it's reasonable to do both. It'll, we'll be worn out, we won't be able to focus. So what I'm asking is, can we do a regular meeting the third Wednesday in November and then do the public hearing the 24th, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
Excuse me, Russ. Wednesday, November 18th, we have a public hearing for planning scheduled.
Okay. And we can't do two Zooms at once, right?
No.
We're, we're a little town, we.
We're a small town.
Paid so much.
Yes.
Yeah.
The problem is Julie and I would have to be at both of those meetings.
Right, right.
At the same time, so.
How about Thursday? Well, yeah, Thursday.
The 19th?
Yeah.
The 19th. Julie, do you think there'll be CBA that night?
Right now, there are no applications. I can double-check with the chairman tomorrow and see if she's ready to make a call.
Okay.
I can let her know that.
All right.
How about Monday? Would Monday of that week work?
Monday would be the 16th.
I have no conflicts, and I have it open in the schedule book.
16th would work for us folks, administrators.
Rob, Andy?
Yeah.
Sue?
16th is fine for me.
Okay. And it's the 24th fine for everybody because that's the important one on the public hearing?
Yes.
I know that's Thanksgiving week, and I know a lot of people aren't going to go anywhere, but.
I'm good with the 24th, plus I'm not sure about the 16th.
Pardon?
I'm good with the 24th, but I'm not sure about the 16th.
Because of work, Sue?
Uh, actually, personal reason.
All right. Well, you know, that's a regular meeting, and at the regular meeting, we have other members who, who could step in. Chris, just for your FYI, there's four members that have, there's five regular members on the commission. One has stepped down on this because he's part of the land trust, and the land trust was interested in this property a while ago. So there's four regular members. We have not included an alternate because no alternate has been able to attend every public hearing. And that, and that does become a problem, as you know, if it, if it gets appealed, especially if it's a vote where that alternate is the deciding vote. So we decided to keep it four people on this application so that it's consistent. So it sounds like we could do Monday, the 16th, for the regular meeting, and then Tuesday, the 24th, for the public hearing. The regular meeting would start at 7:30, as always, but Karen, you're going to have to notice that as a special meeting, right?
Yes, because it's off schedule, right?
Right. And you're going to have to let all the applicants know because that's going to give them less time to do what they have to do, if they have to do.
That's correct. That's correct.
So on the public hearing, we'll start at 7 o'clock, and we'll go from there. Chris, just to make sure that we try to wrap this up, I know we could go into June, I don't know if there's another, well, just so we could wrap this up. My concern, one of my main concerns about Michael Klein's comments in his most recent letter is about how do you have a subdivision where stormwater management basins and infiltrators, biobasins, whatever you want to call them, for one lot is on another lot, when the applicant has stated that they would be selling these lots separate? So they would get this approval and then sell the lots, and then the lot owner would be the one responsible to put in the driveway and whatever other infrastructure that they would have to do. It, it's a good point that Michael made, is I don't know how that gets done. If you have certain lots, stormwater control methods on other lots, and that, that's a concern for me, which I would like answered.
May I speak?
Yep.
I, I think there would all have to be a condition that it was installed prior to any house, house or driveway construction.
But then my question would be, Chris, is how do they get maintained? I mean, what kind of legal avenues are there where these things will get maintained? And my, my concern is wetlands if they fail, and my second concern is the town getting dragged into this. Because the town, not our town, but we've almost gotten dragged into this. Luckily, we have a first selectment, it's pretty rough to deal with when you get into those issues. But Southbury recently had a court case where a private road expected the town to maintain the detention basin, and the people on the private road to the town, because they felt, you know, they pay taxes, and it should be the town's thing, and I just don't want to get the town in that kind of situation.
And, and Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, Chris Smith, for the record, and good points, good, that Mr. Klein made, and good questions, we will certainly be prepared to address that at the continued public hearing. But I did review the same comments you did, and I have made a note of that to address with the team, so we can present that to the commission. Not unusual, wetlands, whether it's a subdivision, separate parcels, or separate towns, wetlands doesn't look at any boundaries. So it's, it's not unusual to have a subdivision application where wetlands do appear on multiple lots, and issues concerning stormwater quality controls have to be addressed in total as opposed to piece by piece or lot by lot, but we will be prepared to address that.
Okay, great.
But thank you for the heads up.
Thank you. And the other heads up would be that Michael Klein made a lot of pertinent comments in my mind that I'd like to see answered, and I think he did it in a good way where it's one by one, very understandable to people who aren't experts, and I'd like Michael Klein's letter to be addressed, so we don't need to keep continuing. Steve Trankis basically referred to Michael Klein's letter, so that makes, makes it easy. Steve basically said, hey, I was right about the calculations, like to see that fixed, and then refer to Mike Klein's letter for, because they have the same comments.
Okay. Will do, sir.
So Chris, I would like Land Tech to also look at Michael Klein's letter and see if that changes any opinions that you may have while you're reviewing the revised plans based on the intervenor's expert's opinions.
You do that.
So I have a hard 7:30 cutoff because we're going to run to the regular meeting. At this time, does anybody from the public want to comment? We received two comment, two letters, one today, and you could comment at the next meeting if you wish, Suzanne, or, and then Paul, Paul Manson sent a letter. Paul, do you want to comment? I read your letter, the commission read your letter. Do, do you need to add, or would you rather wait till the next meeting, or you just want to make sure it's in the record and that, that it's duly noted?
I don't need to comment, Russ. Thank you. I think the letter speaks for itself. So I may want to speak at another hearing, but it will not be about the letter.
Okay. It was, it was a good letter, Paul, I, I hear your concerns, and, and they will be addressed. This commission is taking in all the information right now, there's a ton of it, but as you can tell, I've been reading it all, and I know these commission members because they've served with me on this commission for decades, not years. And we take it seriously, and, and we will do our job. You, you have my assurances in that. Suzanne, do, do you want to comment on your letter, or do you want to just make sure it's in them?
Not at this time, I just wanted it for the record. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Just want to make sure that you know it's in the public record. It hasn't been posted because we just got it today, and it takes us a couple of days. We're a small town, and the person who does that is only in certain days of the week. That's the only reason why it hasn't been posted on our website, but it will be on Tuesday, right, Karen?
Actually, Russ, we were able to get it up posted late this afternoon.
Oh, you guys are good.
So it is, it is on there now, I know. Wasn't much, much time before the meeting, but.
Are we paying overtime?
Should be.
Well, thank you for doing that, Karen.
Well, we thank Jimmy, too. Jimmy's, Jimmy's our ace in the hole.
He is, he's great. Is there anything else, then? Does anybody else need to speak? Or Marjorie, do you have anything you need to add to make sure we're all on the same page?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Marjorie. Okay, with that, I will continue, I will look for a motion to continue the public hearing to November 24th at 7:00 PM.
Almost.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move to the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, all of you, too. Enjoy Denver.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. Okay, well, um, could you put up the agenda for me, Julie? Because it's not coming up.
Well, actually, I've got things in different folders, give me a moment to open the other one, because otherwise, we would, uh, have, I, it might, I was trying to avoid a mess. And let me see if I can. And let me see if I can get this right now. Just to let you know, it looks like Lenora Palatnick has joined us, too. So let me see, share screen. Okay, so there is your regular meeting agenda. Can everyone see it?
It's common, takes a little time.
It does take time.
There we go.
There we go.
I will call the, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland, Wetland and Water Courses Commission for Tuesday, October twenty-seven, 2020. Of a call to order, Andy, you want to start?
Andy Engel.
Rob Horgan.
John Smoligot.
To fetch.
Andrew Wood.
We're all here. We do have a new member. Lana, I think her name is?
Lenora.
Lenora, right. Did somebody let Lenora know we've had a meeting tonight?
Yes, she did.
She is on, but she doesn't have a microphone.
Okay.
Okay.
She received everything, Russ, that the rest of the members got.
Hi, Lenora, welcome to the commission. Hopefully, you can hear me. Welcome to our commission. Thank you for volunteering your time to serve with, it's a great bunch of people. You're really going to enjoy it. It's kind of strange right now. We don't normally have public hearings till eleven o'clock at night and meetings still ten o'clock at night. In fact, before all this happened, we had a couple of meetings where we had nothing on the agenda, and we didn't have to have any meetings for months. But the good days are gone, and it's been busy. And so, welcome, and I thank you for planning on, for being part of this commission. Just so you know, you're an alternate member. That means you could be involved in anything that we talk about, ask questions. But once somebody makes a motion, you cannot, no longer ask questions. Only the voting members, there's five voting members, could ask questions after a motion is made. That's the only thing you need to know. But before that, you could, you could ask all the questions you want. I encourage you to. And if you're put on as a voting member because one of the regular members is not here, which may be on the sixteenth when we have a regular meeting, our next regular meeting is on the sixteenth because of the public hearing on the twenty-fourth, then you'll probably be put on. So do we have all our regular members? We do, right?
Yes, you do.
It's hard to tell. It's hard to tell when you're not sitting next to them. But yes, we have the five voting members are all here. So old business, the Woods Roxbury, two oh six North Street has been, oh, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes of the public meeting will go with the public hearing first of September twenty-second.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Russ.
Abstain, okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from September twenty-second, 2020?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the special meeting from October fifth, 2020, which was to decide on who the independent expert would be for the Woods application. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I abstain, Russ, I wasn't there.
Okay. Who else abstained? John?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so old business, the Woods Roxbury. The public hearing has been continued to November twenty-fourth at seven PM. So we'll move to McDonald, six Baker Road for Garage. Julie, could you put the plan up? And Rob and Andy, did you go out and look at this?
I did.
I did also.
Who wants to start?
I don't, I'd like to see the, I have not seen the plan, the new plan.
I am getting there. Let me see if I can get to the right screen. Okay, this is from the last meeting, which is now turned the correct way. And, and this is what they submitted. So this is the latest we have. And so that is half of it, and there's the other half.
It'll come, it takes time. Now, that's, that's not the right one. It would be the one with the barn. That was for the proposed accessory building.
That is what they...
It just came in. No, I saw, it's...
It's up now, Russ.
There it is. I think that's it. Yep, that has the accessory building on it.
All right, Rob, you want to tell me about this? Just, just to say, the environmental consultant, they did hire an environmental consultant. Everything's slow tonight, even my phone. I forget the name. Do you have the name of the environmental consultant?
Hang on, I do. It's JMM Wetlands Consulting Services out of Newtown.
Right, they submitted a report that tells us that the wetlands function, basically, I'm cutting it down, but the wetland function is that it purifies water, filters water. It's a wet meadow. Wet meadows are critical for purifying water. It's probably an aquifer recharge area, so it recharges the groundwater system. He didn't really speak to wildlife, didn't feel that was a big deal as far as that function. But basically, the function is groundwater recharge and, and basically, it's filtering the water that comes out of an intermittent stream that continues on to Fenn Brook. So he felt that it would not have any, this pole barn would not have any impact on the wetland. Didn't really give a reason other than it's not in the wetland. He did state that part of the wetland has been mowed and has become lawn, which happens with old applications. We, we get wetland creep, I call it. People creep into the wetlands slowly with time. It doesn't really affect the wet meadow, but it could if that continues, so we need to keep an eye on that. But Rob, what did you think?
Well, what I think is, I thought we were going to get, what I'm looking at right now is just like a handwritten map with additions on it.
No, we did, we did, I saw a map. I wish I could find it. I saw a map that wasn't handwritten additions on it.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. And also, so I agree with the, the wetlands are referring to that's just kind of lawn right now. It's in the front of the house towards the road, because I walked it, and that is, that's just lawn right now. You would never even know there's a wetlands there. You know, it just seems, you know, to be like six feet from a wetland, you know, I mean, huge amount of area coverage of stuff. I'm just stating that. I don't know how many square feet between the accessory building, the new pole barn, the existing house, the, the new driveway. It's just, in a small area adjacent to wetlands, it's just a huge amount of space. So I don't...
Well, I agree. How do you, you and Andy are builders. I mean, how do you build a pole barn that looks twice the size of the house without going into the wetlands?
Well, I guess a pole barn, I've never, first of all, as a builder, I've never built a pole barn. A pole barn to me is, is the poles are actually set on the ground, not on a foundation, I guess. I've always put a full foundation under any barn I've ever built. So when people refer to a pole barn, I'm not really sure if that's, if you pour a slab and you set the structure on the slab so it kind of, it floats, so to speak?
No, and my understanding of pole barns is that you dig or drill holes for treated lumber poles that are set into the, into the ground. And generally, that's backfilled with just dry concrete mix, which sets up by absorbing moisture from the soil. And usually, there's pressure-treated boards run between those poles at grade level, and you backfill that with gravel and pour your slab on top of that. And the poles support the roof and provide attachment for the siding nailers. It's a pretty simple approach.
So do you see any problems with this?
I really don't. It's a pretty level lot. I do agree, it's a lot of impervious coverage near a wetland. The report did address that and made an interesting point that he thought the roof runoff would probably be cleaner than water that comes off a lawn that's been fertilized. Kind of hard to argue with that. But as we usually do, I'd like to see either no gutters or gutters with an infiltration system, something like that, so that we're not...
Is Brian, is Brian McDonald on, or Dennis?
Yeah, I'm here, Russ.
Is it Brian or Dennis?
It's Dennis.
Hi, Dennis.
Hi.
So Dennis, are you going to do a foundation, a slab?
It will be sonotube.
But will there be a slab under the barn or dirt?
There will be, you know, a slab, you know, that would be a floor. But I mean, as far as how it's actually built, it's actually built, John would require sonotubes with some type of mounting apparatus on top of the sonotubes that would then connect to the poles.
Did zoning approve this? I saw some kind of denial, I didn't really pay attention to it. Was this denied?
Only because I got, I got, no, I got put back on time. In other words, they have so many days to respond to this, and, and so with having to go through this process, you know, the, the time ran out and they just sent it back.
Okay, and was there a jog out towards the wetland in the middle, on both sides of jog out? Why isn't it just a straight line?
Oh, because it's a little, it's a little skinnier or thinner, you know, for twenty-four feet. And then it's the full depth of what the house is there, and then it goes back to being thinner.
Is there any, any reason why there would be any incursion into the wetland to build this?
No, not at all.
So there'd be no machinery? We make you put up a silt fence on the wetland border and you respect that silt fence and never go over it? You could do that, as you're shown, because you're within six feet? Okay. And what's the purpose? Yep, what's the purpose for this pole barn?
Storage, you know, Brian's got a bigger boat, and it doesn't fit into the other barn without having to go through, well, it just plain won't fit when it's on the trailer, that's all. Won't fit through the door. So, you know, as usual, it misses by a foot, that type of thing.
Okay.
And...
And you're putting on a, what, a new patio? Is that a porch? You're putting on a porch, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a porch up on the, the east side of the building, which, you know, John Cody said he didn't have any problem with at all, but I needed to come back and, and get this thing approved, so. And, and I hope that they pass along the pictures that have been taken that were in that report. I know that the, Mr. McManus, when he did it, he did some fine pictures, and I know that I submitted some from Brian also, which essentially shows that this building is in the driveway area, except for one tiny little area over by the barn that's actually closer to the accessory building that's there now, so. So, but I mean, if you look at those pictures, it's quite easy to see.
No, I did, the report, the report was well done. I have no problem with it.
Hi, Russ, it's John Cody.
Hi, John Cody.
How are you? Hey, I would just like to clarify, the reason why that was denied is because Dennis's application included a change of use for the accessory garage structure. The pole barn, we had some questions about that with the interior use. And as far as the front deck, we don't care about that, that is absolutely fine.
Okay. Dennis, you're also changing the driveway, is that? Am I right on that, just to make sure I got everything covered?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, no big change other than to kick it over a little so that you can go straight into it because it's, it's now an end garage on that house. And so consequently, when you attach the pole barn onto it, you know, that's going to block that, and so now it'll be a front entry garage. So it has to move over a little bit in order to front load the garage.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Dennis?
Just one, Dennis, hey, it's Rob.
Hi, Rob, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Very well.
And I think I asked this of the proposed accessory building. Just like a pole barn, you know, two-car, I mean, this is a pretty big structure so you could have a lot of equipment in there. Just like oil, gas, you know, is the slab's going to be pitched away? You know, a flat slab, or it's going to be pitched away from the wetlands?
Yes. But I mean, I'm not going to be, you know, I'm not, I don't do any, any, you know, Wolvercants or oils or anything like that any more than anybody else would have in a vehicle in their garage. In this particular case, the reason really why we're doing it is the center one where there's a, so Brian can get his new big boat in, and, you know, there really isn't any, a big gasoline or anything else involved in that.
Okay. Yep.
So.
Any other questions?
Well, I just want to understand this, so the driveway is being moved, but is it, Mark, how far the driveway is from that wetlands? Andy and Rob, you went out to the property, that wetlands that you said now is basically a lawn. Is there, should there be noted the distance? And is there's going to be, how's the construction of the driveway or protection? Because I don't see that on the, what's showing up on the screen right now.
Ryan, I'm sorry, Dennis, is this the right drawing? I thought I saw a drawing that was had a little more to it. I may be wrong because I looked at a lot of drawings.
Oh, no, no, there's a, there's an actual survey that Roy Chaney submitted showing everything, showing the accessory building and the new barn and everything else. I don't know where it is in your process, I can't see that.
Yeah, I remember, I looked at it, and I can't find it on my email, but I knew I had it.
Well, just so everyone can understand, we've owned this property since nineteen seventy-eight. And when I bought it, it was a farm. It was actually owned by Mr. White that took care of all the farms, not farms, but the golf courses for the city of Waterbury. And he grew different, you know, landscaping specie on it. And so he had a regular growing concern, and he also, if you know where the Putnam Golf Course place is, out by Lake Quasipah, I think.
Yeah.
Last time I was around, that's where he used to have a farm stand, and he used to sell bushes and trees, and then, of course, he had produce that he sold there. So I bought that property from him back in the seventies, and this was a farm. Okay, there was, there was nothing on it other than, than a field. was nothing on it other than, than a field and grass and, and some bushes growing on it and a couple of trees.
Well, that's not our, that's not our concern. Our concern is, you're gonna add a driveway. You're not even changing it. You're gonna add a driveway. It's going closer to a wetland. Rob and Andy, do you see a problem with that? I know it's a flat property and that wetlands in the middle of the lawn is a, is a lawn now. I mean, you guys saw it.
Is that driveway going to be paved to gravel, Dennis?
It's going to be gravel.
So do you know that, what's the distance to the wetlands of the proposed driveway?
I don't have that right in front of me.
It looks like 30 feet.
Yeah, it's, it's 30 feet out and it's as much uphill as you can get, because the property goes, the pitch on that property runs from the east to the west. It's high on the east and goes to the west. So, but that wetlands area you're talking about, I think is all you're talking about is soil. That's nothing more than lawn. It always has been lawn. And all that property was disturbed when the, the state went through there, because most people don't recognize that Route 67 used to T-bone into 199. And there, and before Mr. White owned that property, a fellow, an old-time farmer in Roxbury owned it by name of Brown. And he owned both sides of that road, actually where the, the old picking and fiddling contest was. And so-
Right, okay.
It went on in 1953, this whole thing, from the deeds that I see.
So Sue, the answer to your question, it's 30 feet.
No.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Does somebody want to make a motion? Or do you want more information? Or?
And will we approve this as a regulated activity?
I'd add on a condition that it's only used for storage and that the driveway is gravel. And if the use or the driveway gets paved, that needs to come before wetlands for approval of the change of use, because the change of use could be, storage is not going to impact wetlands. But depending on what a change of use could be, like an expansion of a house or something, that could impact wetlands. So I have no problem approving this based on the information that I have before us, that it will be used for storage and that the driveway would be gravel.
I would also like to add that during construction of the driveway and construction of the building, that if, if maybe John could go over and be monitoring the progress of it?
Yeah. Hey, it's John Cody. Unfortunately, Dennis banned me from that property.
What?
That's-
Under, under wetland regulation, if we approve this, we could, he has to agree to allow any of us to come inspect.
I'd be fine with that, as long as Brian agrees, his son.
I think, I think John's being a little overdramatic here. It's not the case, but that's, however.
No, I don't think so.
John, was there a problem out there?
Actually, I'm glad you asked that, Rob. Yes, his son assaulted me on that property. He did.
Did you call the cops?
Unfortunately, no, I didn't. I went to the town hall, documented everything and gave, it's, it's all in the past. I really don't care about that now, but I just don't want to have any incidents like that.
Understood.
Yeah, it's, it's gone. I don't care.
Understood. I, I will, so we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'd just like to add one more comment, that I think that the, because of the, the location relative to the wetlands-
Rob, we, we could do that after we have the second. Then we can have the discussion. We're kind of out of order.
I'll second.
Okay. So now we can have a discussion. Number one, the approval is going to be conditioned upon that it's only used for storage and that the driveway is gravel. Any change of the use or the, or if the driveway is to be paved would require to be come back to wetlands, because those changes could impact wetlands, where the proposed activity, as it stands now, we're, we're deciding that it would not. Number two, that the applicant notify the land use office 10 days before they start work, and the land use office will hire an engineer to come out and look at it at the applicant's expense. The town has a right to do that under our ordinance. The engineer will come out only during the beginning to make sure that the, that the slab and pole barn are built where they're shown. Before the work begins, the engineer is to approve a silt fence to be put up for the entire length of the pole barn. And that silt fence is to be installed and then contact the land use office. And the land use office will send out an independent engineer to look at this at the expense of the applicant. The applicant must pay the engineer before he comes out, or that's a violation of the permit condition and the permit will be pulled. It's not a big expense, but it's better that a, an engineer comes and look at this and we don't get involved with, with any kind of malarkey, so to speak. So Rob, what else do you have?
Just, I just wanted the barrier, the silt fence barrier put up, you know, protecting the wetlands, you know, within, you know, very close to the, to the construction areas.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. My son's calling me and I'm just, you know, when your kid calls you, you gotta make sure he's okay. So that's it. That's the condition. Dennis, do you have a problem with that?
No, not at all. It's fine. I'm happy to-
I don't want to be unfair, I don't want to be unfair to you, but, you know, if I go out and look at it, I may get into it. Yeah. Brian's a good kid, but, you know, I, I don't know what happened out there, but I don't like it and I don't want to get involved in it. And I'd rather an independent person who has nothing to do with the town go do that. Do you have a problem with that?
Oh, listen, I have no problem with it all. I would hope that-
It's an expense. I understand. It's not a big expense. In fact, if you want to, if, if, I'll change my motion to say that you're a consultant, JMM, I believe they are?
Yeah, Mr. McManus, yes.
Yeah. Would you feel more comfortable with him coming out and saying the silt fence is fine and the, the slab is being poured within the confines as shown on the map?
Yeah, sure. I have no problem with that at all.
All right, then JMM, JMM, when you notify us, just notify JMM to go out and then look at it and then report to me.
Okay.
All right? Fair enough?
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Russ. And I'd just like to make a comment. I wasn't there. I don't know exactly what went on with John and Brian. And all I know is that it all happened on a, very early on a Saturday morning. And I have no idea, you know, what went on. And it's very unfortunate that it did, but there obviously was something strange happening since it was a Saturday morning. And certainly, the person who lived in the house that witnessed it, I happened to call him and actually talk to his wife. And it, it was certainly a little bit different than what John said.
Dennis, quite frankly, it's not a wetland issue and we got a huge agenda ahead of us. So whatever happens between you and them, we, we didn't hold any prejudice towards you. We did nothing different than we wouldn't do to anybody else. And you got your approval, so good luck with your project.
I got my approval. Thank you very much. And I'm very happy to have an independent engineer come out and do that. Thank you very much.
Well, it could be JMM. You, it's better they do it. He, he looked at it. That's the way we should go. Okay?
I, I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Dennis. Yep. Julie, who's next? What's under new business?
Under new business, Foreman, Old Toffett Road. Single-family dwelling with wetlands crossing. And let me get that up.
Hey, Russ.
Who's that?
Mark Low.
Mark Low, okay.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be old business, not new business.
Oh, you're on the old business. No, wait a minute.
I'm supposed to be, but I'm not, I'm not listed like that.
No, because you, your application was denied.
So then it becomes new?
Yeah, you submitted a new application.
Okay, awesome. I can't wait.
All right. So is somebody here on this application on Toffett Road? What is it? A dwelling with a wetland crossing?
That's correct. Can you hear me, Russ?
I can.
All right, good.
Hi, Brian.
Good. Good to see you. It's been a while. For the record, Brian Baker with Civil One, Licensed Engineer in the state of Connecticut. We prepared the plans for the applicant, Charles Foreman. He's on the line also, if you have any questions for him. He's a lot owner.
Hi, Charles.
Hello.
Welcome to Roxbury.
Thank you. It's beautiful.
Yep. Brian, is there any way we could blow that up a little? Because I can't really, I don't know if my eyes are going-
Actually, I can share the screen if you want.
Yeah, would you-
I can share it with you if you want to take over.
Yeah, that'd be great, because then I can go back and show you some of the older drawings.
And this is on Toffett?
Correct.
Whereabouts?
Old Toffett Road, the gravel section by Gold Mine. I'll show you. We actually had this in front of you and was approved back in, let's see here.
Brian, it's Karen. I think it was in 2013.
Yeah, 2000, February 2012 was the original approval. That's the, the plans, just to give you a bit of history, these were the plans. I'm showing you September 2012, that was before you, that was approved. And this will give you an idea. Here's the, the site. It's 25 acres. You have the driveway. So this is the overall site. We have just one house on the 25 acres. Here's the driveway coming up to the home site. This is the one that was approved, was when Eric Anderson owned the property. It was never constructed at the time. Property changed hands a couple of times now. Mr. Foreman owns it. And he, you know, obviously, since it was never done from 2012, the approval expired. So we had to submit a new application. Note that all the driveway coming up, the septic area, the driveway through the regulated area is identical on the new plans to what was previously approved.
That makes it easy.
Yeah, we have a new, a new house and barn location. So I'll show you the, the new plan.
Do, do I walk this?
You did, Rob?
It was Sue. Do I walk this?
Yeah, I think I remember it, Rob.
So it's the crossing I'm concerned about. Are we okay with that?
Asshole. Fucking moron.
Is somebody on it?
Jeez.
We got bombed. It's not going to stop.
What is it?
It's bombed. It's because they access it publicly.
Oh, so they start-
It may stop, but I've been on them before. We just have to end the meeting.
And then start, and start it again?
No, you can't. They take over. But just keep going.
All right, let me see. As far as the crossing goes, Russ, we went through, originally, we had proposed a four-foot-high by eight-foot-wide box culvert. And then on this application, we had brought Ed Pollack in. I submitted his old report, because we have a vernal pool on the site here. And part of Ed's recommendations, he suggested we go with a bottomless culvert for the crossing. So we did revise the plans to go with a four-foot-high by 16-foot wide. That bottomless culvert's over two, about two times the width, bank width of the water course. So it follows, follows the DEP requirements for fish passage, even though, you know, some years when it's really dry, this'll dry up, but-
You know what? We gotta go look at it. And before this guy starts effing me, let's set up, who wants to go do the sidewalk?
I'll take a look.
All right.
But do you want any, you want the driveway staked and maybe the house locations up top?
Yes.
Okay. And if anybody wants to reach out and have me walk it also, we're available. But we'll get that staked out this week, hopefully.
All right. Who's going?
I'll go, Russ.
All right, good. Andy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can see here, I'm just showing a comparison map. This is the original house location in black. This is the proposed house and proposed barn. All that is outside the regulated area. So all the activity within the regulated area is exactly the same as was previously approved. And the limits of clearing, the amount of clearing on the property is almost identical. It's a little bit less, but, you know, 1.52 acres total clearing versus 1.55 that was on the original plan. Other than crossing, septic, drainage, all is identical. And we actually will have a little bit less earthwork activity, because the old house was cut into the hillside a little bit here. And now we're putting it in the, in sort of a saddle, where we'll deal with more fill instead of excavation.
Okay. So Andy will come out, contact Andy. You could email Karen to get his, his information.
Yep. Perfect.
And then, and then once he knows, he'll go out and we'll see you next meeting. That's, that's, as you know, it's by law, we, we can't approve, even though it was pre-approved, we can't approve it at the first meeting. And that meeting is the 16th at 7:30, because we moved it up because of a public hearing that we have.
Yeah. You guys are busy on that one.
We are.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate your time.
Yep.
Thanks.
Moving on, Julie, who's next?
Okay, we've got Adamski Stone, 83 Squire Road, rehab steps to bridge.
Okay, who's here for that? This is a violation. Notice violation was issued. I think Andy and Rob said they'd go out and look at it.
I looked at it. I looked at it.
Is there an application that has been filed?
Yes, there is. Julie, can you pull that up?
I think someone has their mic on. They're not muted. Maybe Mark?
Yeah, I think that's my guess.
Got the Adamski-
Adamski-
Stone. I've got their, their drawing. I don't have their application. That would be in the main. But I can put this up.
So that wasn't Boom, it was Mark. So who's presenting this?
Well, Adamski's here, one of the owners of the property.
Hi, Robert. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good. So you didn't know you needed to get a permit to work on a stream?
Uh, I didn't, you know.
Okay.
I'm very conscious of these types of regulations for the wetlands. This is our seventh property that we've owned in the area. But we've never owned a property with new water. So when we were working on our stone stairs in our back lawn from our terrace down to small stream, not a jetty park, the small stream.
Could you hold on? Somebody needs to mute. Mark, is it you? Somebody is, there's a lot of background noise. Julie, could we mute everybody except the applicant or?
That 3376 number.
Who's 3376? Could we throw him off?
I can mute it for now.
That's, that's Sparky. That's Mark's cellphone.
He's muted right now, so any background noise, but we can unmute him.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds better.
Maybe we won't. Go ahead, Robert, I'm sorry for that.
No problem, so... The reason for the project was to rehabilitate the stairs from the back lawn down to our little bridge over the small stream from our pond. Because it was basically very difficult to walk and unsafe.
All right, and the bridge, the bridge was there, right?
The bridge was there.
Existing, and that's in good shape?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
All right. So you were just working on the stairs?
Yeah, they're stone stairs. There's like four or five of them. And they, over the, over the period of 30 years, I, we believe they were put in for, put in by the first owners. We're the third owners of the property. They had sunk in, into the earth over time and became a little askew. They weren't a straight line to the bridge. So that was the purpose of our little project. To make them safer and easier to walk to the bridge.
All right. Rob and Andy, you went and looked at this?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
And what do you think?
I don't think it's really a big deal, other than there's a machine in the wetlands.
Yeah.
You know, does we need to have a machine in the wetlands to do this?
They're, they're big stones, but... I had the stones reset on my front porch, which, which I couldn't get a machine to. We did it by hand. So I think it could have been done by hand. But, so I, I really don't think there's a big deal with what's going on, as long as they don't have to do it with a machine.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It's a pretty minor project. And when I was there, there were already hay bales and silt fence up. It seemed like...
So Robert, could you do it without a machine?
I don't think so. Now, it's a very steep back lawn from the terrace. And I think what I heard, sorry, the phone's ringing. What, what I heard from Mr. Sinopoli, who's our contractor, is that he's going to bring a machine from our driveway around the backside of our barn garage towards the terrace area and pull up the stones that are down there in the wetlands area. And, and get them up onto the back lawn where they need to be readjusted and placed into the permanent position.
Is there any water on that stream right now?
Not in that particular area. So the, the water goes from our pond down a little spillway, but this time of year, it's basically underground. So down to the bridge, it's underground, it's dry. And then maybe 15 feet or so, then it comes up.
How many days do you need a machine in the stream?
Oh, no more than a day. And it's not going to be in the stream. They're going to be on the lawn and they're going to rope the, the steps that are there in the wetlands and pull them up onto the, onto the terrace lawn area.
Okay, and you did submit an application and a, and the fee?
We did.
Okay. Was it a $350 after the fact fee?
It was.
Okay.
Russ, we did receive that. And that, that should be a part of the package that was sent out to all of, all of you guys.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with this? If we just go ahead and approve it?
Yeah.
Let them get in there before it starts, before we start getting hurricanes?
I just...
Yeah, I was going to say that it's supposed to get, we're supposed to get a lot of rain towards the end of the week. Talking about one or two inches.
Well, we could condition it that he does it during a dry, dry day, where there's not sufficient water in the stream.
Okay. I just don't think there's any need for a machine to be in that wetland.
I think it can all be up on the lawn, for sure.
Yeah, the, the machine won't be in the wetlands. It'll be up on our terrace lawn. And they talked about how they would strap the stones with some sort of strapping mechanism and pull the stones out of the wetlands up onto the lawn.
The, my only other statement would be that, you know, there's a lot of wetlands on this property or adjacent to the property, Jack's Brook, the pond, this stream. And that everyone really just needs to be aware of that in the future. And I would also like to state that the excavation company, Sinopoli, I'm sure it's not the first time that he has been near, near or around a wetland.
Yeah.
And that he should certainly know that this can't happen again.
Right. Okay.
Robert, you got that?
Yes, yeah, I will inform him.
I have one question.
Yeah.
On this paper in front of us. It has down periodic inspection by Vince after each rain. Can you explain that to me, why that's on there?
I'm not sure what that means. Now, my partner's here. What does that mean?
It means until, until they, until it's stabilized, they're going to take a look at it after each rain, right?
And who exactly is Vince?
Well, Vince Sinopoli is the president of Sinopoli Contractors. Who's our contractor for this project.
So he's going to take a look at it after every rain until everything's stabilized, right?
Yeah.
Which, to me, everything should be stabilized. You better hurry up, because...
Yeah, I'm sure he won't have any problem with that.
Yeah, growing, growing season's going to end soon.
Right.
Lawn won't need to be seed of their height, because it'll be dirt for the winter.
Russ, this is John Cody. I can swing by when I start and stop this project if you like.
All right, that's fine.
And Vince, and Vince, one other thing. Vince knows, or Vin knows that there's no fertilizers allowed within 50... What, is it 50 feet, Russ?
50 feet.
Of any wetland, stream, pond?
Right.
You can't have TruGreen or Kemlon. Do any kind of pesticide, herbicide within 50 feet of any stream, wetland, without a permit. You could get a permit. Doubt we'd approve it, because
Right.
that's the worst thing going on right now with streams is people putting fertilizer right up to the edge.
Let me say a few things. I'm the guy who never does any fertilization of our lawn. We do no pesticides. I'm the guy that picks up the litter on Squire Road twice a year. I'm very concerned about this stuff. We would be very concerned about anybody upstream doing anything to Jack's Brook that would in any way change our, our water.
That's great, Rob.
Great, that's great, Rob. That's what we want to hear.
We like to hear that.
This is the reason we bought this place. We love it. We love the water, the pond, the stream, Jack's Brook and everything. We're not going to do anything to, to harm it in any way.
Good. This is the reason why we volunteer hours of our time to protect the waters of the town, because we love it too. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve this as an after-the-fact permit activity. Contingent upon the machine is not placed in the brook?
Right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do have one question, Russ.
Yep.
In the past, haven't we like sent letters to, you know, construction companies to make them aware of the fact?
We will be sending a letter to Sinopoli Contractors, warning them that if they work in Roxbury, they better get a wetland permit or then, or we'll fine them $1,000 a day, which is what we can do.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that.
This is the first time for them, so, you know. But we will send a letter. We do that. Just reminding them, there's, you can't work near a stream or wetlands within 100 feet without getting a permit ahead of time, which usually takes 65 days, so.
So I have one question, please.
Yep.
So if you...
Well, you can't talk right now, because we're in the middle of a motion.
Oh, okay.
You gotta wait, let, let us finish. So, so I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Still carried. Okay, thank you, Robert.
Okay, so my question is, so since we've approved this motion, when can the work restart?
Right away, as long as the machine's not in the stream.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Yep, just let John know, because John will come and check in, okay?
Absolutely, anytime.
All right, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Yep.
You too. Bye-bye.
What's next, Julie?
Next is Mark Lowe, 10 Baker Road, regarding his berm.
Keep him muted.
No, no. I'm gonna pull that one up. Let me share. Let's see, where is he? And that is the newest submission we have.
Julie, can you move this up on the screen?
I will. I'm trying to get Mark, asking him to unmute, because it's not letting me unmute him. All right, tell me when it's good. Does that help if I?
Hey, it's John Cody. If people have questions on this, this kind of morphed from a zoning complaint. So I know a lot about this.
All right, John, at the end of this berm, it shows a brook.
Correct.
So he's going to start at the brook and go to the road?
Basically, Mark has to screen his operation, that property line, from his neighbor.
Why can't he do it with trees?
Uh, he has a prerogative to do what he likes. I can't tell him what, which direction to go into.
Where's the dirt for the berm going to come from?
Uh, he's working on a project on Hemlock Road. It's, um, it's clean fill. I mean, we can take a look at it if anyone wants to, but it's clean fill. Mark states that he will topsoil it, seed it, hay it, mulch it for plantings in the future. Again, he needs to...
He's putting a berm at 100 feet of a buffer zone.
Correct, that's his...
When there's a feasible and prudent alternative.
Well, that's up to you guys to decide, not me.
Oh, guys, am I wrong?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, no.
I don't mind him planting trees, but I know it'd be more expensive than bringing all that dirt, which he probably has to get rid of.
Well, I just have, you know, just one thing to say. I mean, it's, it's relatively flat right through there, right?
Yeah, it's dead flat. It's the same property that Dennis has there. There's, there's zero pitch.
So the buffer zone, all we're worried about is material getting into the stream?
Yeah, correct.
So that maybe we could just pull the berm back a short distance from the stream, you know?
There you go, a compromise. Pull it back 30 feet, put trees from 30 feet from the stream, and then do the berm.
Sounds good to me. I'm, it's not my hat.
And anybody else have a concern? Because I'm not going to approve a berm right up to a stream.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I'm not so sure.
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me. And maybe put some stone, you know, large stones at the end of that berm.
Yeah, on that property, erosion seems pretty unlikely. It's just, water's going to sit there and puddle before it does anything else.
Yeah, I like...
Anybody have a question? I'll look for a motion. Nobody wants the motion?
I will.
All right, go ahead.
I'm not under commission anymore.
I'll move, I'll make a motion. I'll move to approve this berm, but reduce it 30 feet away from the wetlands. And do we worry about protecting it? I guess it's flat, because we don't have to worry...
Well, we need a silt fence at the end of the berm while, until it stabilizes.
Yeah.
So that's your motion?
I mean, do we care if he's planting trees for the balance of the 30 feet?
He needs to, I guess, for a buffer, right, John?
Uh, will that be a zoning issue, not a wetlands issue?
Yeah, that's more his issue. But I would say that we want to improve the, we want to improve the berm closer than 30 feet to those, to the stream. That's what we're saying, correct?
Yeah, that's what I...
So, Rob, redo your motion. It should be, we approve a 70-foot-long berm with a 30-foot buffer to the stream. Then he could deal with the rest as he wants.
I think that berm's more than 70 feet. It goes...
Yeah, Russ.
He's proposing it from the stream all the way to the road.
All right, so the, the motion would be to approve it 30 feet from the stream to the road?
I, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
My pleasure.
Who's next, Julie?
Adam is 152 South Street.
Is somebody here for them?
Russ, they did not think they would have anyone on tonight. It's a renewal of an old permit. Originally, it was approved back in 2013.
Well, then it's, it's run out? Or did they want to keep it? What, what is it?
I believe, I couldn't find all of the file, but I believe they have renewed, continued to renew it.
And what is it, though? How could we continue to...
The driveway, driveway culvert replacement.
And they, 2000, no, they're, they can't. They gotta submit a whole new application.
Oh, they do, okay.
Yeah, the permit is gone.
Okay.
You get, you get two years unless you ask for an extension 60 days before the permit's up. And they didn't do that, so they got to start over.
Okay.
And tell them, it's not our rule, it's the state law, and I can't
Sure.
over, you know, I can't say, forget it, we'll, we'll just do this, right?
John, are you still on?
He's drinking a beer. Are you kidding me?
I, I thought, I thought he...
And Ross.
John?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Was I right about that? Did they renew this or did it expire? Do you know?
Um, I have no idea on that. I honestly didn't dig into it at all.
Okay.
I didn't get the email or anything.
We really didn't have time, so.
Well, what, what did they, what did they submit?
They've do so much. I, I'm not sure if this is the original pipe going underneath the, underneath the driveway. It's certainly maybe, but again, I don't know.
They need to submit a no, new one with an engine, new engineering report. Things have changed 2013... They need to submit a new one with an engine, new engineering report. Things have changed. 2013 DEP, deep requires much different things today than they did then.
Okay. They did drop off the original map, which was done by Brian Neff this afternoon, but it was late, so I didn't have a chance to get it put up.
So, tell them to have Brian submit a whole new application. Take a look at what he proposed to make sure it meets today's standards, and come to the next meeting, which remind people it's on the 16th.
Okay. We'll do that. And that is it.
That's it?
That's it.
Wow. So, do we need a meeting on the 16th, then? I mean, what do we got?
Let's continue. Anything continued?
Well, we got the renewal for the crossing, which Rob and Sue already looked at. That shouldn't take long.
Okay.
And then we got this, which we'll accept it and have to do a site walk, so we're not going to really spend a lot of time on that.
Toffett Road.
Yeah, the Toffett Road one.
Right, but that one's easy. I mean, it's basically a renewal of something Rob and Sue already looked at, right?
You know, I think you should keep the meeting on the schedule, and you can cancel it, or, you know, change the agenda.
No, I don't mind. I'd rather have a 15-minute meeting than just do the public hearing and not...
Well, the other thing is, the way things are going, we're getting new applications all the time.
You're right.
The new ones between now and then, so.
If I could interject, this is Sam Saban. I just wanted to see, I had submitted an application just a day or two ago, and...
Alright, you want to put that up? Oh, Sam submitted this, he, Sam submitted this.
Oh, that's right.
I did say that we would vote it on the agenda, and we'd take a quick look at it, and then set up a site walk.
That would be great. Thank you, Russ.
Yeah. So, I look for a motion. Where is it, Sam? What's the address?
It's 130, 130 Toffett Road.
Alright, so, I make a motion to add 130 Toffett Road to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, Sam. Julie, do you have a map, or Sam, could you bring a map up as she gives you control?
Um, yes, I should be able to, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Let us know what you're proposing to do.
It is still shared.
So, who's going to look at old Toffett Road? Andy?
I am, yeah.
You want to look at this too, while you're up there?
Sure.
If you want, I'll go with you.
No, it's fine.
Alright.
Happy to do it. I'll go out on a bike ride some Saturday.
There you go.
Karen, just let me know when they're both ready.
I certainly will.
So, can I share my screen, Karen?
Julie, that's a Julie question.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, you can.
But yes, you can.
Okay. Can you all see that?
Yes.
So, this is a, this is at the, just right next door to the Mathel Preserve, the old Mathel property on 130 Toffett Road. And they, there's, I believe there's, Jeff Fairbear's doing the construction. There's two existing permits for the building of the new residence that's set back from the road. Toffett is at the bottom of your page there. There's the old cottage, and then there's a, the old little, another little outbuilding to the, to the west. And so, they would like to construct a pool just right off of the back of the house. We're constricted, obviously, by the wetlands, which is why we're here. You can see that by this line here. This is the 100-foot regulated area. And we are also constricted by two septic systems, one being the new one, designed by Howland's office in New Milford, and then also, and a existing septic system over here for the old cottage. So, I have kind of shown those 25-foot setbacks, so we basically are backing right up to those, and unfortunately, it has to be right close to the house, but the main reason that we're locating it here, besides all the kind of permit regulations, is we just want to keep it out of this meadow, and just, this is a really pristine, beautiful view down here, so we're just kind of keeping it right in close to the house where they can kind of use it right off the deck.
So, that's the 100-foot setback that I'm looking at?
This is here, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, you're going into the buffer zone.
Correct.
But you have other activity that went on. What is that, a cottage? Screen planting?
This is the...
Existing cottage. Yeah, so that's between the wetland and the pool, right?
This is the existing cottage septic system.
Right.
So, it's not, yeah, it's not the actual building, but it's their old septic that was located by the builder.
Where's the cottage?
It's just to the south, so it's right, it's right along Toffett Road.
Wow, that's a long way to a septic system, though. I see existing, is that it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, we do have a filter pad. This, this is, I will, will say that this is kind of more of a drainage culvert that was a result to the construction of the road. It is obviously designated wetlands, but it's more of, it was developed by the culvert coming underneath the road.
Andy will go out and look at it. I don't, it doesn't look like a big deal. Andy will let us know.
Pretty familiar with the property. I go by there regularly, anyway.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Russ?
Yeah?
One question. Is there anything to discuss in regards to the Horegan Preserve?
Oh, that's right. Why wasn't that on the agenda? Mr. Cody, are you still on? He's still on, Mr. Cody.
Yeah, looks like it. Drink up and...
Why didn't you report this?
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening to this latest conversation.
Alright, so, Mr. Cody reported to me that the land trust, did the land trust call you, John?
Are we, again, I was, that was a way. I wasn't listening to what that conversation was. Is this about...
The Horegan Preserve.
Okay, yeah, alright. I didn't want to say something wrong. Yeah, but, again, I wasn't listening, so I just don't know. I could tell you...
No, I thought it'd be on the agenda, that's okay.
Oh, no.
So, here's what's going on, gang.
I can tell you.
The land trust hired a company to do some maintenance on the Horegan Preserve, and John, what did they do, end up doing? They moved a bunch of rocks that's right near the stream.
Yeah, but John, the land trust called me and said that they thought they might be in a little bit of trouble, that they did some work. So, I went to the Horegan Preserve, and I walked up the trail to see what I found. What I did find was they removed a stone wall, I guess, it wasn't on their property, it must have been on the Calder Preserve or Calder Land, to fill in some ruts to make the trail more accessible going farther into it. Is it within 100 feet of the wetlands? Definitely. Was any machinery involved with it? No, there wasn't. It was all done by hand. Any impact to the wetlands? I didn't see anything like that. Nothing that would have caused any damage or anything, but they certainly did something that they thought they needed to address. I talked to her, said that she should probably get on the agenda to resolve this, because she was in fear from the Calder Foundation of...
She did, she did call me, and I told her she didn't need to have anybody on the call, that we would take it up, and John, John is part of the commission, he can answer if we need him to, but we don't. But who wants to go look at it? I'll go look at it. I always wanted to go to the Horegan Preserve, and I'm going to park my Jeep right on his fence.
It's not that big of a deal. When you walk in, you're going to have to go for a stroll for a little bit, but you'll notice where the stone was removed, just to fill a little...
You want to come with me, John?
Definitely. What are we doing?
Good, alright. You and I will go. Okay, is that it? Anything else? We'll report back next meeting to the commission. Anything else? So, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. See you on the 16th.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Alright.